Okay. Thank you all for coming together tonight on a special meeting. We are meeting tonight because, as you all know, I learned Friday afternoon after, well, Friday afternoon that Ray Santilli was an employee of Community Paradigm and called this meeting to discuss whether or not that impacted our decision of selecting Community Paradigm, whether or not we might want to reconsider with this new information that we did not have available when we made the selection. In the interim, Mr. Lynch has called me and let me know that they are withdrawing their bid. Given the scheduling of this meeting and his other schedule, he indicated that Community Paradigm really wouldn't be able to meet the new timelines of the project. So they withdrew their bid. So, we no longer need to discuss them. I think now we need to discuss what selection we would like to make for the new consultant to support us for the search. So I think, as you all, I didn't ask MRI or the Collins Center to come back. I think we had, we had their proposal, we had them in for the interview, we had discussion about the two, other two firms as well. So I think we should reconsider those two options and discuss which we might want to choose, if any.
Can I just say one thing, just to, just not to create the wrong impression? It's not that Community Paradigm did anything wrong, or Ray Santilli did anything wrong. It just, it just didn't seem appropriate that a recent employee would be working with. So I just don't want anyone to think that, that it crossed the line. It was just us being really careful, have a fair and equal process. And you didn't say that, but I thought...
Right. No, it's worth clarifying. I think, I definitely don't want to say anything disparaging about Mr. Santilli. It's, it was more a new piece of information that we did not have available when we made the selection, that I think warranted a discussion. It's a material piece of information. So it warrants a discussion whether or not it was, you know, would be a, still the right choice for us. And since they withdrew, no need to have the discussion, so.
I mean, I think that we got a really thorough presentation last week from the three different applicants, or the three different consultants. And I think that, I actually would echo, at the night of that meeting, Mr. Selectman Valancourt spoke very highly of MRI, and I think that all of what Selectman Valancourt said was absolutely applicable. They seemed like a really thoughtful company, one that had a strong track record, certainly a long history, definitely the longest of the three applicants, with a network that extended far beyond just the Merrimack Valley. So, I mean, I would be comfortable going with them just as much as I was with Community Paradigm. And so, I would make a motion, but I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak as well.
Yeah. I, well, do, I'll go last, I guess. Does anyone else have something they want to share?
No, I, no, I, I feel the same way. Just perhaps a few modifications on, something I guess for us to discuss is they're, they're giving them the opportunity to write a whole thing on the town of North Andover. I would prefer that they didn't do that, that I would like to see what people do on their own. Just a couple of small modifications that we would ask Dee to, to see if they would be willing to work with us on it.
What was it, the...
The question for me, there were two things at the prior meeting. Really perplexed a little bit about giving the applicant the assignment of writing a paper, a research paper on the town of North Andover. I, I really don't see the benefit of that. I see it, I want to see what they do on their own, and what they learn on their own. So that would be one thing that I think we could perhaps have another question where we could, or process, that I think would be more revealing as to how prepared they are to be a town manager in the town of North Andover. The other piece too, and I spoke to it a little bit, maybe a little bit more, is that, you know, Community Paradigm will review all the resumes, they will give Dee a copy of all the resumes. But I still think, as a matter of checks and balances, they'll present to us, through our selection committee, the finalists. But I still would prefer that we hire our own background check person. It's just, again, a check and balance of the fairness of the procedure. And I think we could work with Dee, and, again, in finding the right company. Just, again, to keep everything fair, and, just, again, just checks and balances. We've all heard or seen where some things have gone awry in the past, and I just want this to be the best opportunity for everybody to apply, and, nothing against MRI, but, again, just checks and balances, so.
So, just my comment on both of those. So I think, with respect to the letter, or the essay, I really think that's just their way of make, of kind of weeding out those people that just submit their applications and their resumes just because they have it prepared. You know, it's a way of ensuring that somebody's truly interested in the job. Do some, I mean, we've all been through professional interviews. I mean, the best thing to do is learn about the company you're interviewing with, and go and, and be able to speak intelligently about that company. Same thing here. I think it's, they're just trying to weed out those folks that are just submitting their resumes because they have them ready, and they've, they've got it, and they're really not interested, or they've never been to North Andover, they have known nothing about it, but they just know there's an opening. So it's a way of maybe, you know, kind of weeding those people out. I think, you know, they've got experience in this area, maybe we want to hear from them pros and cons of that letter. And maybe, before we just say, "Scratch it, we don't want to do it," maybe there's really good reasons for them to do that, and they've got some experiences. The second thing, with respect to the security checks or the background checks, I agree with you, I don't see any problem with them doing theirs, and if we want to do ours, I mean, that's certainly, I would think, our prerogative, to do our own background checks. It's going to be someone that's going to work for us, so we don't have to rely on anybody. They, but I'm sure, it's not going to take theirs off the table, because, as we heard, I can't think of his name right now, but he's very, he takes those background checks very seriously when he's recommending somebody for a job, and I don't think he's going to let that go. So, we do too.
Just a point on the background check thing. I don't, if, if they were to do their own background check as part of their process, which they clearly feel strongly about, I mean, if they come up with something that kicks a candidate out, to your point of a check and balance, I mean, we can, I would assume, be able to say what piece of information kicked this candidate out, and they will give us the specifics. So I don't necessarily feel that that's, I guess I don't, I like the idea of a check and balance. So I guess, does anyone know, Dee, do you know, like, can they provide us the specifics of the background check result that led to? Because I certainly don't want them to just say, "Not this candidate's out because they passed, they failed the background check," and may not have any idea what it is that they failed.
I would have to check with what level of detail that they can give without breaking confidentiality for the person. But I'm sure if they tell you that they're disqualifying a candidate, it would be for good reason.
Yeah.
But we, but we might have, no, that's the thing. I, I don't think that they can, but you, that's for you to find out. My understanding is that that information is confidential.
Okay, so...
So, it's confidential, so they wouldn't be able to tell us? Is that what, I just want to make, is that what...
I'm not sure, but that's what I understand, but I'm not...
I need to ask what level of detail they can give you when they don't recommend a candidate.
If they couldn't give us it, why would another third party be able to give us it?
I can't answer that question.
Yes, but even if they gave it to Dee, and then she would...
I could see not giving it to us in an open meeting, certainly, but, like, giving it to the screening committee and not an open meeting and an executive session.
So I, when, so they was, because MRI went last of the three consultants, and I, I agreed with Selectman Smeddily when she asked, not really reflecting too much on it, but it should be a third party. And then when Mr. Gould pushed back, I just thought of it more, and this may sound almost lazy to say, but if we take the responsibility of a background check away from them, and for whatever reason, something slips by us, we own that. He is our consultant, we're, we're hiring him for the rest of the process, which is just as important. And if something slips by them, they own that, that's not on us.
Except, we own the new town manager.
We, we, no, 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 we, I think that, first off, I don't, I can't imagine why their background check wouldn't be as thorough as anything we did. I would be uncomfortable also about making sure, we wouldn't be doing that internally. We're not having a permanent staff person conduct that background check, because I wouldn't want, if it's confidential, I don't want someone that that town manager is in charge of to be conducting a check on them, because I'm sure whether they're passing the background check or not, they're, they're seeing a lot of information about that person that is privileged. I mean, I could see it both ways. I guess I just don't, I understand the checks and balances, but if we don't trust whatever consultant we pick, then we need to restart this process, because there's a lot of other, we, we need to trust whatever consultant we use. We need to trust whatever consultant we use. So if there are concerns about trust and them not being able to get us the information that we need...
I don't know how much background checks cost, does anyone know? Because, I mean, there's nothing precluding us from doing one, and them doing one, and then...
That's true, yeah, exactly, exactly.
And then, they come up with something that we don't come up with, then, oh, that's, that's interesting, we can figure out what we want to do if that occurs.
I think they're both conducted honestly and fairly. It would be apparent, whether we do it or they do it, but I still think we're turning over a lot of trust to a consultant. And I think that, I mean, we've, we've, I don't want to bring any names up, and I will not, but we did, years past, have someone who worked for another department, who turned out to be a very high-level person, that didn't go well.
Was that in the consultancy part, though? A background check?
I don't, I, I don't know, but I think a simple background check would have probably revealed the problems that we have, I, you know...
But we're not saying we're not going to have a background check.
I mean, maybe here's a perspective, right? It's like credit checks, right? There are different levels. You can run a credit check, you know, as, as a consumer, right? And it's a very simple, and then there are a number of levels. And so, the check that we would run as a checking their check is not going to be necessarily to the level of sophistication as their check. One of the things that was appealing about MRI was their orientation to doing background check. Remember, their expertise, at least as I saw it, was, right, police, lawn...
Public safety, that's a very good point, yeah.
So, it's like, so, we're going to pull a credit report to make sure that our, the way we see credit is sort of the way their in-depth analysis is, the way a lending institution does it. A lending institution's level of doing a credit check is well beyond what a typical citizen would do. And so I look at that and go, "Well, we could do that, but it's really not at the same level as the professional." And so, I understand that we want to protect ourselves, but then I put, so I add this perspective, and then I look at it and say, "What are we really doing here, right? We're engaging a consultant to help our designees identify the recommended candidates. They're not making the decision, right? They're helping our folks evaluate that, that decision." So I think, the end of the day, if they were making the decision directly and making the absolute recommendation to us, then I think you, we would have a heightened level of necessity for further evaluation. But since they're referring them in, I'm comfortable with the process, especially given their, their orientation. And I, I concur with you, and I think Selectman Valancourt, and, yeah, MRI was absolutely my second choice, because I thought they were close to Paradigm. I just thought the presentation was the difference between the two.
Would it be satisfactory?
I mean, that we can build in, so we're, we're giving the authority to our chair and to Dee to work with MRI, based on the assumption that we approve them as our consultant. Giving them clearance that, yes, we'd want you to do a background check, but reserving the right. I mean, I don't know if there's a professional reason why we'd have to include this, I think that we would be able to have this flexibility, no matter what, that we could perform our own background checks in addition to whatever they perform. I don't, it doesn't have to be one or the other, right? I mean, we could both do them, right?
I agree with you, Adam, and I think, you know, I don't think it has to be one or the other, but I do, I would like to reserve the right. I would really still like to have it. I mean, I guess, I didn't want to use the name, but it was all over the newspaper, and I think most of us can remember, that we had trouble with Harry Haratunian. And they, for whatever reason, that did not come through, and if anyone did even a reasonable background check, I think they would have found that there were problems in the community that he left. And this is, this is why...
But we're doing that kind of check.
But again, this, but also, this firm, I mean, that seemed like, that's what they specialized in. I mean, you're arguing, we need to do a background check, and I completely agree, but their, their, their expertise was in the public safety area, so I would think they would do the most thorough background check of anyone.
What I would say was that was the, really, one of the most important pieces of this whole search.
Yeah.
And that one that he, Mr. Gould, personally oversaw was the background check, to ensure that it was done thoroughly, and, you know, so, I mean, I'm saying, let them do their background check, it's probably part of the price, it's part of the cost. And, and if, and if we want to do our own background check to be, as a second safeguard, then what, what prevents us from doing that? Nothing, right?
That's fine, I'm fine with that. I just, again, to me, it's the checks and balances, and I certainly don't want to drag Mr. Haratunian back through the mud again, but I think we were all like, "How did this happen?"
I think that an important thing for the audience, and for anyone at home watching, is that this is not a discussion about a background check or not.
Right.
We are all in agreement that background check should happen, it's just the process we follow for the background check. I just don't want there to be any, any confusion about us not being on the same page on that.
You're absolutely right about that. No one's saying, "No, no," I just...
Okay, so can, I think we've all agreed, they do their background check, it's part of their process, we may also do one if we so decide. I would like to comment on another thing. I, I also didn't particularly love the asking the applicants to fill out an essay question, because personally, I think we can get that information through an interview, whether or not they've done their homework on North Andover. Maybe that's just because I don't like the idea of writing an essay response myself, and it's not, I have an engineer by education, so it's not appealing to me, but, anyway, I mean, I could go either way, I guess, I could be swayed. If we were going to tell them that we wanted them to skip the essay question, I would, I'd be fine, I guess, either way. What's more important to me, and another point that I want to raise for a discussion, is emphaticness on, they, I want to make sure that they absolutely empower our screening committee, so we're calling it screening or search committee, I forget, search, sorry, I keep calling it the wrong thing, search committee. To me, that's, that's the core group that we chose to represent us, and I want them to see every resume, I want them to have a discussion with the consultants about what, you know, why this resume, you know, meets the criteria, and this one doesn't, and this one is in between, or whatever, I want them to have that discussion. I want them to be fully empowered in narrowing the list that comes to us. And I know, when I asked them the interview question, they said, "Yes, we will do that," but I really, I reread their response tonight, in the written response, and I didn't feel it says clear in the written response. So, for me, I'm happy to go with them, but I really want to make sure we sit down with them in the beginning and have a discussion about, our, our search committee is empowered in...
They're guiding our search committee.
They're guiding our search, right, exactly. They are not the search committee, they are assisting the search committee. Right.
Madam Chair, you did ask a question. I don't know what an independent background check costs, because I've always done them in a package with an assessment center or something of this nature. But if the board desires to do a background check, it should be done in tandem with MRI, because if you wait until they do their background check and you have someone check their check, it's going to prolong the process by several weeks, because background checks can take some time. So I think that just, just should be a consideration, that there should be some sort of overlap in timeframe, so that we're not extending out the deadline, and make sure that whoever we hire has the same timeframe as MRI. So if MRI can do it in two weeks, we probably should make sure that if, if the board wants to hire someone, they can meet that timeframe as well.
How did other people feel about the essay question? Dick said he was fine with it.
I agree with, with Selectman Smeddily, I mean...
Well, my feeling is this, and I'm trying to be as polite as possible, that, so, it almost, so we have these candidates that come in, and you would hope that the ambitious one, the one who worked hard, would really be doing their homework, by having, and I'm assuming it's the finalist, not every candidate who sends in an... When you have them all go off and to their homes or their offices and write this essay, and then bring it back in, you've leveled the playing field. You don't know who had the initiative to go out and do their research on their own. So I feel, I just don't understand the value of, I think we could come up with, doesn't have to be tonight, is a better question, a better method with the consultant, and, no misunderstanding, I still support the consultant, I just think we should just tweak it. I just don't, I just don't understand the real value of giving them homework to take home and then come back with.
I think there was value 20 years ago to that, but not today, when you have, we all have access to other communities, public access stations, we all have the ability to go watch other communities' town meetings. Recent hires stand out as people, when we sat down, for instance, with Ms. Casey, I remember you said that you put yourself through watching our town meetings, and I couldn't think of anything more dull than watching another community's town meeting, but, I mean...
You got the job just because you watched them.
But I, I appreciate that, but I think that that, it works both ways. So, you know, we could go and easily watch any applicant conducting themselves when they aren't under the microscope, and when they are just doing their day job. I, I mean, I, personally, that's, I don't care what the essay actually says, we can have them write an essay, I'm going to value seeing them in action, which we can actually go and see.
So my last comment on that would be, so we're hiring consultants, we're hiring a consultant at a good price, who have a proven track record of providing, you know, public officials to towns, and they sat here and they showed us a very long resume of towns and cities that they've worked with, and they told us that most of those people, I think, all of them, were still in place. So why are we trying to tell them how to do their job?
No, so that's, that was not, that, that wasn't them, because they've been around so long. That, I'm not, I'm not disparaging them, that wasn't them.
Okay, so why are we trying to tell them how to do their job?
Well, there were different philosophies from three different consultants.
So, okay, but this one had a certain philosophy, and it would seem like a proven track record.
But why do we have to go with exactly what they're offering? We are the client, we're the customer.
But we're hiring a... But, I would say, you know, it's like hiring a coach. You don't necessarily always agree with everything that the coach tells you to do, but it's part of their technique, part of the process, and I don't know whether we're over-focused on this in proportion. And I would say, the feedback that I think they're clearly going to get is, "Listen, we really," I think the flip side of this is, "We really value that community engagement part, we're going to put a lot of weight in that. Sure, if you want to do this essay piece and so forth, that that's part of your MO, fine, but just know, the weight we're going to put into it is the community engagement part, how you discuss interface with us, that's where our weight is." And I think, rather than trying to kind of micromanage the process a little bit, I think we can very clearly deliver the message that our weight is going to be, as you say, you know, Rosemary, on how they respond to us and how they work with us, that the written component, we're going to weigh less. Again, that's, they're the consultants, let them consult.
So... But we set the criteria, so I, so that's why, so I take, I take, if you, if you think that a, an essay would help you, I'm saying that an essay, I literally, I guess for anybody listening, I have no value, I give no value to whatever essay, but if you give value to it, that's important, I mean, that's, that's why there are five of us. I just wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to build anything into our interview, and that's for us, I mean, the essay is for us to use as part of our combing and interviewing.
I'm, I'm going to challenge that, because I don't think that the essay was for us. I think, I thought they said they used the essay to, during their screening process, to get down to the, so like, they, this is where I said they didn't empower the search committee as much as I would want them to, because they use the essay, they use that to skinny down the list of people that they then give the search committee.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
But that's their job too, right, is to skinny down that list to the search committee? I mean, that's part of their, their assessment criteria.
Right, so the other, the other candidates were going to take our criteria through interviewing us, and say, "These meet your criteria, these don't meet your criteria, these are somewhere, these are interesting." And the search committee can look at all those, but that...
Other consultants, not the candidates.
The other, the other, sorry, the other, the other consultant was going to do that, with, based on the criteria that they got from us.
Maybe the essay is a way for them to determine whether they meet our criteria or not. I mean, do we truly...
Maybe, maybe.
Do we truly understand that they...
Maybe we don't truly understand the essay. Sorry, I just wanted to read that part about the essay again really quick.
I mean, I think we're spending a lot of time on this, I think we could probably work with the, with the consultants, and, and exactly as Chris said, and work with them, and just deter, you know, let them know that the essay is not one of our high criteria, but, and understand what they use it for and how they use it, and, you know, if it's, if it's a critical part of their assessment process, then why would we take it away from them?
But we do have to settle on this, in order to keep at the timeline even roughly, we'd have to at least settle on this on Monday night, then, because otherwise, right? I mean, am I, I mean, we can't, in order to direct them for that piece, if the piece is, as you said, Madam Chair, where it's being used prior to the applicants hitting us, then they need to know, they need to know. Yeah.
No.
Even before we sign a, yeah, so they would, they need to know this, we, we need to decide on this in the next several days.
So, in coordination with the Board of Selectmen and our screening committee, we will develop a written essay questionnaire to be distributed to the top qualified candidates. Okay, so they already had qualified. Generally 12 to 15 candidates, focusing on questions, focusing on questions on matters of special relevance to the client's needs or current situation. The questions will be prepared in consultation with the screening committee. Candidates will have special, 10 days to respond. Our consultants will review and rank the responses. After the responses are returned, we will do canvas and telephone interview the candidates, focus, placing focus on the position, reasons for leaving their current career, blah, 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 this, telephone interview. So, essay question, telephone interview, then, so this is where I'm, they say they reduce the pool to three to five. So this is where I ask, so what does the screening committee do?
Yeah, so I, I think I, based on what you just read, I think, no, it's, based on what, what you just read, where, I took it as, I think we should just make clear that we want, we want the screening committee to establish the criteria for how they will end up screening. I think that that's what we appointed. We appointed a screening committee, let them establish the criteria, and if that includes that they feel that there'd be a value in an essay portion...
Or an open book test. I mean, they take it home. I'm just not...
This is why we appointed a subcommittee, right? I mean, this is a, a committee, this is, this is the job. Their job is to find the three to five most qualified people and get it to us. They have a vested interest as five residents in this community as well, while vested beyond actually just being regular residents. I mean, I think that we could take the bigger, the 10,000-foot approach and say to the, say to MRI, that we would like you to work with our screening committee, our search committee, to determine what criteria they want you to comb through prior to them getting it.
And I don't think there's anything wrong with us...
And that gives us flexibility without obstructing the timeline.
And then maybe they'll explain the essay questions in more detail with the search committee, and maybe the search committee will say, "Yeah, that'd be awesome, we would love that."
Well, and besides it, it's not like it's narrowing it down that much, because they're still talking about 12 to 15 candidates who they're getting written responses.
That might narrow it down right there, that they don't want it to be...
Right, you're, you're not talking about the final three.
I agree with you on that.
That's a pretty big loss if they just don't want to write an essay, and they're going to turn down, you know, walk away from a job like that. I mean, why would they go through the process and then say, "Oh, I wrote an essay? No, I'm going to walk away." I don't think so.
I think we've, I think we've given, I think there's a lot of direct feedback we can give them, and, and to me, the message is that, that committee is going to be critical and, and needs to be engaged all the way through, and that they may need to take a look at some of their tools and adjust them to our expectations here.
Yeah, and let me just say, I'm not a big fan of essays either, I'm just saying that this firm has a process, and a proven process that they use, and we shouldn't be telling them, you know, maybe we can guide it a little bit, but we shouldn't be telling them how to do their job. If we're hiring them to do a job, let them do it.
I guess I don't... Totally, I agree with you in part. I think, yes, we hire them, but we are the client, we are the customer, we know our town, we know what we're looking for, that we should have input, and if, I don't support an open book test, I just don't know how else to say it, and I think we have every right, or, or if they do do an open book test, then we should have something else...
I mean, what's your big hangup about it? I don't understand it.
An open book test?
Yeah.
Because, again, well, if they take the essay, they do it at home, they do all the research at home, it's not like they put them in a room and say, "Here's your essay."
Well, depending upon what it is, I wouldn't want my town manager to make a decision on the spot for some, you know, if you're asked somebody a really important question, you don't necessarily want them to decide that in the next half hour.
What I keep saying is, I want the one that we could question and had all the information...
Yeah.
No, let me finish, please. Not, not tell them to go do what we want, and then they, you level the candidates somewhat, and I'd say probably quite a bit, that now they're forced to go do all the research. I want the one that we didn't have to tell to go do all the research, but unfortunately, with this conversation, I'm sort of telling them what we want them to do, but, no, I want the one was the initiative, the smarts, that drove around town, that did their homework, drove around town, that did their homework, maybe listened to meetings, and did it on their own. With what they're telling is, they give them the essay all about North Andover, they do it at home, they look everything up online, and then they turn it in. I think you don't get an idea, I think it levels the playing field somewhat, not totally, because people write better than others or speak better than others. I just, I just do not support an open book type essay for this job, at least not knowing are there going to be other things where we could find out where people are thinking on their own, on the spot, and show real intelligence and initiative. That's.
But we'll still have that opportunity in interviews. We're not foregoing interviews.
We could still ask them those questions that were not on the open book test or whatever. I mean, it's just, to me, it's just another tool, another assessing tool that they use to do, you know, to get to an end product. And.
Can I ask a question? Dee, did we ask you to, or, we didn't hire you. The town manager hired you. Were you required to write an essay when you took this position?
No.
What about the prior position? You were assistant town manager in Wilmington?
No.
Just curious.
Madam Chair, if I may. So if you do decide to go with MRI, I can certainly call Mr. Gould tomorrow and discuss the essay, discuss the timeline, and also the empowerment of the search committee and how that fits into what your goals are. But I don't think we need to delay working on the profile and setting up meetings while we determine what kind of the, the process is going to be. Because we are on a very tight timeframe.
One thing, one thing was clear, and we've had a pretty robust discussion, but I think, I think we all agreed that we want the search committee empowered. I mean, that, you know, there's discussions about background checks and essays, but we all want the search committee empowered. So that, that can be communicated right away.
But I believe in what you read. They said the search committee had input to those.
Right. So the search committee did, yes, that, the search committee helps come up with the essay question. Because you a little bit swayed me. I came in not really liking the essay question, but if they, if they are baking the criteria, so to speak, into the essay question, the way they answer it is, is interesting then to see how, how well they meet the criteria. So it's more than just a checkbox criteria. It's, it's qualitative. So, and if the search committee is helping to come up with that question, based on what they're saying is important, then I don't, not as opposed to it, I guess. Still don't love it. But, but to your point, and I was a consultant for many years of my life, and I definitely didn't like when I, if you're buying a consultant services, it's usually because they're very good at doing what they do, and they're bringing the tools that are effective. So I do get that point as well. If this is what they bring and that's been effective for all these other towns, maybe we shouldn't say, well, don't use your best tools. So maybe it's a hybrid. Maybe it's empowering the search committee. We're not as interesting, you know, go very light on the essay. That's not as important to us. Maybe we talk with them and figure out what's the right hybrid for us. Yeah. Okay. So I agree, we don't need to, I mean, that doesn't need to be resolved to start working on the profile, start interviewing people. So if we vote tonight to select MRI, then we can start, talk to them tomorrow and get going. Hopefully, we'll only have a week delay. All right.
Madam Chair, I motion that we appoint MRI as our selected consultant to work with our search committee and give you and our assistant town manager, Denise Casey, the authority to hammer out the final details of that contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Great, awesome.
All right. That's it. Our next meeting is Monday.
Madam Chair, motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.